This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the February 5th, 2024 regular council meeting to order at 7:00 P. M. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think, believe we have one addition to the agenda tonight. Josette?
Yeah, so I just need to put new business e scheduling for a joint Parks Committee meeting, Council.
Parks meeting. And then we will have one removal from the agenda tonight, Notice it, No Citizen of the Month recognition tonight. So you can cross that off. So with that one addition and removal, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved and seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Norman.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Huber?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any presentations? None. Mayor's report. Of course, we are not having a Citizen of the Month, but I want to share with you what I, the experience I had up at the school last week. One of the neat things about sitting where I sit is you get to go out in the community and once in a while and mingle with the constituents and the people who live here. Well, I was asked by a second grade teacher to come up and talk to our class about our government, local government here. So I, of course, said yes, and I'd be honored to. But I got to thinking, how am I going to describe to second graders what we do here in City Hall? So I came up with the idea of forming their own councils. So I had the teacher put all the names in. There was another second grade class, there was, so there was about over 40 kids. And so they each put their name in a bowl, and I drew four council positions and a mayor. And they sat up in the front of the class, and I took my gavel there, so the mayor had it. And I gave them the idea about bringing to their own council, making Valentine's cards for their parents in two weeks. So they brought that idea up to the council, and they made a motion, and they seconded it. And they all voted in favor of making their parents a Valentine's card. So it was a lot of fun, and they asked a lot of questions. And before I went, my wife is a school teacher also, she said, "They're going to ask you how old you are." And sure enough, when I raised my hand, and I was kind of prepared, I said, "How old do you think I am?" And he said, "87." And I said, "Well, not quite, but you're pretty close." But it was really, it was really nice. I had everyone's attention within five minutes, you know. And I said, "Well, now I have a question for each one of you." And they all went around the room, and every, I said, "What's the one thing you like about living here in Vernonia?" So that was really nice. And a lot of them said the Parks, and one of the little gals said the people are very kind. And, you know, it was really cool. And it lasted about 45 minutes. So it was a lot of fun. Wanted to report on that. And I think I'll wait till the end of the meeting, and we could report on the dinner that Donald and I attended last week on the 23rd in Classifying. So that's all I have. Any council committee meeting reports?
No.
Yeah, the Public Works Committee met end of last month. Basically, I mean, they're still working on the street sidewalk connectivity plan. We're starting to narrow down the projects, the locations projects. Keela's got a great big list of funding sources, probably picked your brain for those. Ben?
Our man had brought forward to the committee an issue about water meter reads, and that some are being habitually parked on by vehicles. And so we've had difficulty getting those reads and stuff. So he brought to the committee what would be a possible solution for that. It was kind of interesting, because one of the members came in and prefaced the meeting, "Well, I don't think we should find anybody for doing anything like that." By the end of the meeting, she, the person was, "Yeah, we need to find him for doing something like that," after we warned them for doing so. So it looked like they're going to push something forward to us. I mean, they had, they, this is the value of these committees. Because I know we're going to do the same thing they did, and I'm going to be sitting here going, "That's exactly what they discussed, that's exactly what they said." This is, they spent a good hour there at the table, and we knew this was coming beforehand, so they had time to think about it. So I think they fleshed it out pretty good. So sometime in the future, we'll be seeing something pushed forward to us on that. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Dale. Our senior board meeting was canceled due to weather. So I believe we're going to meet this coming Friday. Susan or Cherie, are you on with us?
They're on.
I am here.
I'm here.
Do you have any committee meeting reports tonight?
The Parks Committee did meet at the end of January. There were no significant takeaways at this time. They're kind of in the middle of their, their smoking policy project and their campground design and everything. So yeah, everything's kind of just moving along, nothing new.
Okay, thank you, Cherie.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you, Susan. And topics from the floor tonight? Okay. Is that agenda for acceptance? City council meeting minutes for December 18th, 2023. City council meeting minutes for January 8th, 2024. Any questions or discussions on those two meeting minutes?
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda for acceptance.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Norman.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Huber?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Consent agenda for approval. Public Works Committee meeting minutes for November 28th, 2023. Parks Committee meeting minutes for November 29th, 2023. And Library Board meeting minutes for December, 2023. Any questions or discussions on those three meetings? If not, anyone like to make a motion to accept these three meetings?
I'll move to accept the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Susan.
Seconded by Counselor Wagner. Thank you, Susan.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Huber?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, unfinished business. Oh my goodness. New business, Library Board recommendation. Caitlin Fennell could be found on page 12, the application, I believe, or 15. Has everyone had a chance to look over this application from Caitlin?
I only have a question. This is Counselor Wagner. Is there any reason that she would not be allowed or advised? I mean, would it be potentially an issue, the fact that her mother is the library director?
No, we did, we did check with legal, Susan, and the volunteer handbook, she has to follow the rules in that, and that would prohibit her from having any, like, budgetary raises or anything that would be considered conflict of interest. That's all covered in the volunteer handbook.
Perfect. And she has excellent writing, which is pretty awesome.
Yeah, I couldn't tell if it was their handwriting or a font.
Very nice, neat printing.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that's cheating.
It looks kind of like it might be a font.
Oh, okay.
I think it means she's good at technology, which is a win.
Right?
I don't know, the As are not all identical, so I don't know.
Maybe.
Could be AI too.
I want to know, but no, whether it is or not, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, just for the fact that she's been a volunteer for eight years, that says quite a bit.
Yeah.
So if I have general consensus from the council, I will appoint Caitlin to the Library Board.
Yes, please.
Cherie?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, great.
Aye, I'm good.
Okay, it's my honor to appoint Caitlin Fennell to the Library Board. Congratulations, Caitlin. Welcome. It's a good board. I served on it for a while, or I was a liaison to it. So does that make your group, Susan, a little bit more? Full, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
Yes, and I am embarrassed to say that I have not yet seen them in person.
Oh, okay.
But I'm getting, I'm getting there.
Okay. Okay, Parks Committee letter of recommendation, senior fitness benches. It's 14.
Cheriece, do you want to speak to this, or would you like me to?
I can, I can give a quick kind of overview. So in the Parks Master Plan, there was kind of a initiative, an initiative to put in like a senior fitness path, kind of back there where the snack shack, where the grandstands were. And I believe Rachel Organ and Kelly, I'm blanking on her last name, the fitness trainer. Charmin, yeah, were to get some grant funding. And so they were able to get some equipment that's like senior-friendly, outdoor, sturdy fitness equipment. And so that's going to go along the path. And the committee has requested that we just purchase two benches as a city to put along the path as well, so that it'll be kind of like a little meandering loop, where every so often, there'll be kind of cutouts for the equipment, and then a couple places to sit. That's kind of the gist of it.
So the money is in Parks operational materials, but since it wasn't outlined in the budget, that's why I had Rachel and Kelly check with Parks Committee and then get your guys' approval, because it could be around $2,000. They're about, the benches that we get that are the vinyl coated green are about $1,000 a piece. One of the things that they're asking for in kind of our participation in is that one bench would be a standard bench. The other bench would be a little different than the standard bench, still made out of the same material, but it would be a bench with arms like this, low and high, so that seniors can practice doing this motion on it, getting up out of chairs. It'll function as a resting bench as well, but it would have those kind of handles that our normal ones don't have, that are, it's called a dip bench, to practice that motion and strengthen that muscle group. They're also planning on putting in a, it's like, kind of looks like what your kids would have had at the pediatrician's office, that was like wooden platform on the bottom with wires, and they'd like feed beads through it. Well, it's a big version of that that's on concrete. It looks just like playground equipment as far as the materials. And they pick up a weight, you know, not super heavy, and they feed it to do range of motion, because a lot of seniors lose range of motion. And then the last thing is a, basically an exercise bike type thing. The wheel is just a metal disc, and it's all industrial made, it's all coated with, and so it's vandal proof. Like, we picked out ones that had the least opportunities for vandals to mess with them. We're hoping with cameras and lighting on the snack shack that they wouldn't go in the night and do that, but we did our best to pick out items. So that would be kind of a community, city, and seniors kind of joint project for installation. They haven't ordered any of it, they're waiting to see if they could get these, or if they needed to go look for other funds. Do you guys have any questions?
I guess, has the path been staked out so we know we put them in the right place?
It hasn't.
Are they going to be in storage until we put the path in?
So it's all going, the installation, all is happening at the same time. So basically, we're going to use the little tractor to peel the sod of the path. Meanwhile, go lay down fabric and the cedar chips at the same time as the installation of the units. So it's like a, going to have to wait till the equipment gets here, which could take 60 days, and then a sunny weekend for the install. And it's going around the little grove of trees, so we're not taking up any currently used property, and we're not taking away from like uses that happen throughout the year. It's, it's kind of going to act as a protector of those trees. So at Jamboree, we don't have people camping right up to that grove like they have in the past. It'll have its own use. But they can camp everywhere else. And I've heard there's a lot of campers planning for this year, just in hearing, but that's just a side note.
Well, it sounds like it's laid out, so I am for it.
Okay. The seniors will be excited, because there's a lot of them at the senior center. Kelly's been doing the exercise classes, and so she's been talking to them about getting out and getting outdoors. And all of them are like, "Well, what's there to do outdoors?" So this will be something she can say, "Well, go to the senior fitness path and do a little exercise, do some reps."
Anyone like to make a motion?
Is there any more comments first? Well, Dale?
I move that we direct our administrator to purchase two benches for the senior fitness path.
I'll second.
Norman beat you out. Okay, so Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Huber?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Street closure request, Holly Vaughn.
I don't believe Holly's on the call. This is a renewal, basically. That fair went so well, they would like to do it again. They'd like to do it Saturday, May 4th, for the same section of Weed de Maple with addressing the library patrons, stopping at the library patrons, so they can get in and out. And it'll also be across the street at the pet, at the pet store. It's kind of how they set it up last year.
Any questions or discussions on this request?
It looked like it was pretty well attended last year.
Yeah.
Any little new event we can have?
Right, some activity.
Hopefully they get into that.
That was Blue Bird Day. It was quite a success last year, for the first year.
So yeah, I just need a motion to approve from council if you're, if you're all for it.
I'll move that we approve the street closure for Holly Vaughn.
I'll second.
There we go.
Oh, you're supposed to say that.
Go ahead.
I started saying it's been moved and seconded.
You were, you were a mayor once.
I was, sorry, it's, I'm confused by what I'm doing tonight. Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Huber?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Josette, you're doing good multitasking.
Power installation and food cart court.
Say that fast 10 times.
Mr. Shirley is here to stay with the request.
So I am requesting power to the food cart pod. I own a pot dot com Portland. I've also been a high-profile executive chef at Pumpkin Ridge Golf Course. A lot of people have had my food from here in town that have suggested that I move into town, as Portland has no longer become a great environment for where I choose to run business. I also am a full-time father of two kids here in town. I'm a silent member of the community, because as some may know, being a chef, it demands hours and time. To be a part of the community as much as I would like to. I'm requesting to be my partner at the facility, at the pod, and I would be willing to sign a multi-year contract. I also think it would provide other people, other opportunities for a lower-income option to be able to support the community with other types of businesses as well. I've looked into.
Hey, Joe, can you step up there? The ones online can't hear you as well.
Sorry. I've looked into some spaces in town, and it just doesn't seem like there's any retail space left in town. So I think that you could possibly see some opportunities, like with the tattoo parlor. Other people could move in with businesses like that as well. I just think that it would be an opportunity, an opportunity to grow some lower-income opportunities for some people.
So I talked to Joe about how we had discussed it way back when Mario's council was trying to work with David and Richard from Calypso's, and they didn't want to be there. And so they had us price out what it would be to do like a transformer there. If that's something, I told Joe, you guys would have to tell me that that was something you were interested in getting bids for or estimates for, and then I'd have to bring it back to you to see if that works within budget.
Josette, do we, you know, when the Saturday vendors go in there, do we charge them for that at all?
For open-air market?
Yeah, we don't.
They charge their vendors for a 10x10 space $5. So it's, it's more of, that's more of a community farmer's market. We do charge the, the food carts, though. We charge them what roughly amounts to this year for $10 a day, so it could be $300 a month if you were there every day. So that would be.
Oh, trying to think what that would look like with a electric meter there.
Well, they'd have to probably put it on a pole, because we're in the floodplain there.
Yeah.
And then most likely, we'd have to work with whoever's going to stay as an anchor tenant with like a plan. If, if we see river levels are coming up, they'd have to have a disconnect and high-ground plan. Because the rest of them, we haven't had an anchor tenant, right? Like, someone there all the time. Most of our food trucks come in, they send me a calendar, they pay me the daily fee. They sign an agreement saying they're holding insurance and all the things. But we haven't had an anchor tenant. We had discussed it originally with Calypso's, but they didn't want to be there. They wanted to be at the gravel on the other side of Mini Mart, which we know that's a FEMA buyout that can't really have more stuff there. So we moved them to, because they wanted their same building. That would have been the structure, not a movable thing, so it didn't work for them. So they moved to the lake. So is that something you guys would want to get an estimate and see if it's something the city can afford, or?
You'd probably want 220 there, wouldn't you?
The plan is to have multiple people there, that would probably be the most logical scenario.
So I'd have to get, I have an estimate from years ago, that's not going to mean anything.
I would only, I personally would only need 110. I'm only running like three or four refrigerators, not a lot of electricity at all, but.
If you're building for a future, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And I think that's something we'd have to take into consideration is future build-out. I mean, because we put in one, and then you get three hooked into it, and then now we're not, we don't have enough for any further expansion that would cost us again.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'd have to look into what that whole thing is going to cost us for service.
Yeah, and space-wise. I mean, I know what Holy Smokers is, I know what Chop Chop Chicken or Chop's PDX now is what they're called. He could give me his, I could figure out, like, is, I'm thinking it's max four to five, depending on their configuration. So maybe we plan on building, if you guys are for it and the estimates are legitimate. Maybe we plan for five, because past that, if you were going to do something like Forest Grove has or the Biden Tumalo, those are smaller trucks, and they're kind of lined up end to end for a courtyard field. That would be a whole different potential project if you're going to really upsize past like five units. Is that something?
Well, I'm wondering too, we have those power distribution boxes, right? Is that Jamborees?
Yeah, those are owned by the festivals. And those aren't like outdoor all the time types either, right?
Yeah, I was, but I was wondering for, because you're probably going to have a mix.
Yeah.
Of, like, he's wanting to set up full-time, you're going to have others, or no, I only want to come in on the weekend, and that's it.
Yeah.
And do we pull temporary power box over and service for that? I don't know.
Yeah, I think we probably, what our stance has been is you're self-contained at this point. So the ones that come in now are all self-contained. They have their own propane, their own generator, whatever. I think you could, the city could pick or choose what other, after your, if you do it, after your first tenant, what is available, and then just say that's what's available, or come self-contained. Because the, the one-offs usually are traveling down the road, and usually going to places that are like a parking lot or a Sam's Club or, right? They're not needing the infrastructure. But yeah, we'd have to look into all that, just to make sure we're being smart.
So you're looking at something kind of permanent, then?
I would like to not, yeah, my plan is to operate five, six days a week, all year round. I've got very good reviews from the people that have had my food and the expression of them wanting somebody of my caliber to move into town. Looked into a couple other options, doing it. Looked into a couple of other options, doing it at my house, like on my own property and some other things. And compliance issues, obviously. But this is kind of where I ended up was that this was a central location for everybody in town. You know, the mini mart right there, which everybody, it's popular at the mini mart, plus the events that are going to happen in town. I think it's a good destination to invest in for my personal choice, I think, as well as possibly others as well.
Well, this is the hotspot in Columbia County in the summertime. Perdonia.
Yeah.
So do you guys want to just direct me to bring you back more information, estimate, talk to the WOEC?
Sure.
You're not promising you're doing it just to get the numbers?
Right.
Yeah.
You knew you want a motion.
No, you can just, the consensus is to direct staff to bring it back to you with more information or more estimate, whatever.
Incentives for me to move?
Yes, please, this is Councillor Wagner.
That was good to me.
Okay.
Well, okay. Thank you.
I'll let you know when they are getting that next, when it's on their docket. Okay.
Okay, business from the departments.
My parks thing, I got to schedule it with you guys, that's okay.
Thank you, Joseph.
Yeah, so, um, as I stated to you guys, I think at the, one of the updates, the engineer really got on the plan and has provided us with three designs.
For the campground.
For the campground.
At the lake.
Yep, so the, this is the 30%, they're all kind of built, drawn to 30% of the details are there. So I'm trying to schedule a very short special meeting where the, it can, it'll be here. We'll have the three designs, the designer, and you'll have three dots. Two dots go on your first choice, one dot goes on your second choice. And whatever one wins out between council and the parks, that's the one we build. That will give the public also a chance to come in, if anyone's interested, see the plans and maybe talk to their, and we could always, the other thing I was thinking too is it's hit or miss. Part of me thinks maybe we should put the three visuals on the website so that if someone's really for one, they could contact their council member or their parks member and try to talk to them about why they're for or against the version. Not that we're going to send them to you, but just that, you know, an announcement. These are the three designs being considered for the lake campground, the meeting where the decision will be made is this. You know, talk to your parks committee members, come see the things at the meeting or talk to your council. So I had parks committee tell me the days they're not available. So the days in February that aren't already something we have would be the 21st, the 22nd, the 26th, or the 29th. Are any of you, do any of those days not work for council?
What time?
Um, we were thinking like a six o'clock, just, it's not going to be a long get-together, it's just going to be the.
Work job public.
It'll be a special meeting so that you guys can actually be together and not.
But open to the public.
Yep.
Yep.
Can you read through the dates one more time? I'm sorry.
Yeah, 21, 22, 26, or 29.
I cannot do the 26th.
Okay.
I am out that entire, actually I'm out for two weeks then. 21st or 22nd, I think would work.
We do have a council meeting on the 20th on Tuesday.
Yeah.
As the president's day on the 19th. The 21st would work for me, the next day too.
Work for me.
I'm open.
Okay, so we'll do 21st at 6:00 PM for our voting meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. 21st, right?
Yes.
Six o'clock.
Yep.
Okay. Business from the departments.
No.
Conflict, no?
No.
Okay.
I just.
He was voice.
I was voice tech comedian.
There's probably no ordinances or resolutions tonight. Correspondence. Okay, city admin.
Okay. So, no change in testing the old dump, haven't got a date back from them. I'm like, guys, the water table's high, come test it. The ODOT grant, we're currently getting bids. So there's not really any change on that from the different asphalt companies and the chip sealing companies. We found a few over the Longview Bridge because they're hard to come by, the chip sealing company. Don't like to come out here. It's too far for everybody. So once we collect all the bids, then we'll be picking the lowest qualified bid that meets all our criteria to get the paving and chip seal. The ADA project, I'm sure you've seen them out here surveying more. They're planning on coming this year is what they said. Whether they get out, the project along 47 is like three towns long. It concerns me that they're going to try and do it like right during jamboree or something. But it's their highway, so I guess we'll just put up with it. Springboard sewer, so we did publish the SOQ, the Statement of Qualifications for Grant Administration. That has a closing date of February 29th for the applicants. And that would be someone like Columbia Economic Team or Coal PAC or Community Action Team, those are, or it could be a single person that does grant administration. Those are the types of people that typically bid. The DEQ upcoming permit, so I've had a chance to talk to a few of you that popped into my office and not had a chance to talk to some of you. We had a meeting with DEQ about our upcoming permit. As you know, we've been running off the old permit from the 90s because DEQ was backlog like six years of getting their permits out. We did the upgrade to the whole system, which was installing the hyperiak, the DAF, all the raising of the dike roads nine years ago. So we've been running that system for nine years. In our meeting, they told us, well, the document was conditional that they allowed us to design the hyperiak under and install the hyperiak under. That document and the design criteria got challenged by the EPA. And so now they, the only thing in their criteria set that our system acts as is an injection well system. Problem with an injection well system is that we cannot degrade the water table one bit. And I said, okay. What's your limits and what did you find in the water table? Well, we haven't done that. We don't know what the receiving body of water has in it. So we don't know what to tell you, how to tell you not to degrade it. And I said, oh, well, you're going to need to figure that out because our citizens spent $5 million paying to install this section with all of its connections. We're still paying on that for the next 20 years. And if it's going to be obsolete, we're going to expect either you help us figure out how to not make it obsolete, or you forgive us the debt, or you, something. Something's got to happen. So Tiffany Yelton, who is the, now the management, she used to do kind of what Mike Penny does and now she's the director in that office. She's willing to come out and talk to council. I said, well, let me get all of our data together to see how likely or unlikely we would be able to treat to the other components that they're asking for. Because even when we're discharging into the river, they now want us to clean 85% of the dirty part of the water that's incoming. Well, with our INI, it's impossible. It's coming in almost fully diluted. So we can't hit 85% of nothing, almost, right? We used to have a criteria in our old permit that allowed if, if it was 133 was the dirt level coming in, we could go down to 65%. Because even at 133, it's still hard to treat 65% of the elements out of it. So those are kind of the things Public Works staff currently is going through all the old data and figuring out when they had anomalies and how often did that occur? And will we be able to meet it? And then they're going through, how often were we under 133? So we can have some relative data to push back on DEQ and be like, this doesn't make sense. We will constantly be breaking this one. Right. They did tighten ammonia a little bit. Not so much for our daily max, but for the monthly max average, they tightened it. So that means that we can only have like three daily maxes go over before you're messing up the month average. But that could be mitigated by installing a couple more Puglus, potentially aerating one with some just bubblers of their own. The blower motors we have are like really, what is the word?
More than adequate.
No, but what is, what's the word if I'm, if I'm like lessening the power coming out of it?
Well, they're.
Reducing.
I'm, we're, they're neck way down. Yeah, so that they don't, because there's not enough manifolds to take the hopeful pressure. So there is air we could use in some other capacity to treat a little bit differently in one or in more units in Lagoon Three to really knock down that ammonia. If, you know, if the guy's data says we're going to be out of compliance six out of 12 months, we got to do something, right? You can be out of compliance, you can have the little hiccups, but it can't be a regular break of the rule. So I wanted to bring you guys up to speed on that. And then, once I have the data come back with Chris and talk to you guys about all the things we consider troublesome for us and then maybe invite Tiffany to come and answer questions. And potentially, maybe we do it where we could take the permit and that same thing to Public Works. And so when Tiffany comes, maybe both parties could be at the meeting. So the Public Works Committee, because I know they're. They were kind of the champions of the biodome Puglus and the whole project. They really, there's still a few members on there that pay a lot of attention. So the other thing, once we know what the big discrepancy is, then we do have contacts. Rick met a couple of contacts at the city-county dinner. We can start to put some pressure on it, whether it's at the state level, the federal level, whatever. If, if they're just pushing back on us, we're going to be like, how can you let someone build something that costs $5 million and nine years later say, now you can't even use it? Because we will have a storage problem if we can't. There are some alternative brains, Councillor Webb. One of the options too is, is if they wouldn't allow us to do it in the hyperiak, which is an injection well system, would they allow us to treat subsurface into the wetlands that we built as exfiltration? So we do have a lot of options. It's kind of a big turd in our pocket that they're pulling this on us. But I think we have solutions for the community. The other thing they did mention, if we, no matter what, is they will work with us to reduce the interest rate on the loan. I'd have to have Angie tell me how much that actually equates you in cash. Because if it isn't near $5 million, I still have a problem in my mind. So that's kind of all of it in a nutshell, just thrown at you. I can send you kind of the draft permit if you guys want to look at it versus, I can send you the two permits, right? The one we're currently under and the draft one, if that interests you. Or if it's just going to be too much, then I understand. Do you have any questions from that?
I would definitely like to see that, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would as well, I think.
Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you, I think the more information we have, and particularly ahead of time, so it gives us some time to digest it, would be great.
Okay.
Just a thought I had, well, the installation of our new pumping station on the Springboard project and the repair of manholes, reduce the amount of stormwater going into our system somewhat?
It will. But in reality, we're like 20 years from getting everything buttoned up where INI isn't diluting to some capacity.
Isn't a lot of this about the temperature of the discharge?
Well, so that's the reason, that's the other thing, is we were using it to scrub temperature. So it's like, but now they're saying you can't degrade. Somebody must have been just putting pollution down into the water table is what I'm thinking happened. And that's why the EPA is like, heck no. But yeah, it was primarily used to scrub temperature. That's why we were sending it down to that silty sand layer. And then by the time it mitigated back to the river, it was, the ground was cooling it.
Actually beneficial for the river.
Yeah, we actually have a cooling effect when the river's hot. So I'm like, it was not making sense. And Jeff, Jeff and Chris's heads were just like, what? Now we have to learn this whole new thing. So I'll send that information to you and then when they get their data, I can send that too if it's in digestible pieces, if it's just sheets of numbers. Yeah.
So, and you mentioned this to me too, Rick, we talked, but talking to Jeff. It was pretty obvious in all of this whole thing is not everybody is aware of everything at the same time.
The DEQ or us?
Well, everywhere.
Oh.
It's, it's what you don't know syndrome here, you know? What do we not know?
Yeah.
And so, you know, I, I mean, I'm all for, we get our data together and actually see what hurdles we can't jump over.
Right.
It's going to be an issue for us. And, but then I think it might be worth our while to hire somebody that is in that profession that does know. And Jeff did happen to mention, he gets a business card from a lawyer in Portland that this is his specialty every year.
Oh.
And so, you know, it might be money well spent to.
Just have him review and see if there's anything.
He might know something we don't know.
Yeah.
Something DEQ don't know.
Yeah.
It was pretty obvious in the meeting, DEQ didn't really know.
Well, they, we were like, yeah, that's not right, or we did this. And they were like, I, but it's, I think it's very telling of kind of state government. They very rarely come to the field and see what the heck is going on, right? It's only kind of in emergencies. And then they're just developing a permit based on rules in their office. It's like, are you kidding me? You know, so, yeah, I think they definitely, it's similar to ODOT in that it's kind of silos. Like I look at permitting, I look at native species, right? They're just in their little versions and not networking.
Because, I mean, from what I've gathered, correct me if I'm wrong, during your discussions, they, they offered the, the options of, oh, we'll allow you more time to discharge. Well, we've always been this hard, fast, I think it's what, May 15th and November 15th, you can't be discharging into the river.
Right.
Period, black and white.
Yeah.
And now, and if we'd have known this before we built this, we may have been able to work within that framework. But now they're saying, oh, well, I think what they told you is, if it's 33 CFS at the click click gauge.
Yeah.
You can discharge to the river.
Two.
You know, within these criteria.
Yeah, it was only like 200,000 gallons or something.
And well, for us, there's plenty in the summer period. And I think Chris or somebody said something about, well, what about Rock Creek? And it was like, Rock Creek didn't exist to them, they didn't even know it was there.
We're like, if that's 33.
Yeah, this is probably 50.
Yeah, then by the time the cubic feet per second get to the outfall, it's like combined. Then by the time the cubic feet per second get to the outfall, it's like combined.
Yeah.
They're like, oh, and we're just like.
So is this, is it thirty-three at our outfall, or is it thirty-three at Clear Creek? And you're making that calculation of the extra Y. It was, it.
Yeah.
No, no. We gotta ask all the questions and get it back to us in black and white so we can understand.
And just know what the expectation.
To me, it's very frustrating, and I think you hit on the point. I mean, they're dealing with some of this up in Yum-Ittila Boardman area of nitrates and the water table, and people are getting nitrate poisoning and.
Yeah.
All kinds of stuff that, and I understand that. But the criteria for this hyperic discharge from the state was very specific in that we had to own the water table underneath this project. You couldn't have built this if other people were in that plume.
Right.
They designed, they showed what the plume would be, or we did. And we own all the land underneath there, and it goes through the river.
Right.
They won't let us put it in the ground to get the cooling effect, but yet we could discharge it straight to the river. I think they made a movie about this.
Well, I'm not totally convinced that we're out of compliance. And until they prove to us we are. I, I mean, I don't know as much about it as our Public Works and you, Josette, and Dale, and probably Donald, but I have a little common sense.
Yeah.
That what I've heard, if it's working, don't fix it, kind of thing. So like you said, we, we met with our state representative, well, I got his contact, and he lives in Tillamook, and he's the, he's the go-to guy. They just started legislative session today, so he's probably real busy working on other stuff. But eventually, if it becomes more of a bigger issue, I think we should definitely give it a hold of him.
Well, and then the other thing too is, if they're going to let us discharge it to the river, I want to know what the receiving water body is, because we have the DAF and the disc filter and a spot on the wall with pipes coming in and out of it where we could put further polishing treatment and, and clean it even further before we send it there. So I need them to prove what the water table contains so we can see if we can meet it. Because maybe we can meet it, and this is a mute point, and we just keep going, and we say, thank you for the interest rate drop, and we're going to clean it to the standard. But without knowing what that even is, we don't know how far we have to go. If it's super clean, that's one set of problems. If it's dirty already, that might be a lesser set of problems, right? If it already contains things in there that just naturally occur. That's the, in a nutshell, DEQ upcoming permit.
I think we need more data to, you know, what we are putting out, what they're allowing, you know, I think those figures have to be put there and get some more figures out of them, because it sounds like they didn't know any more than saying, that system we put in is not legal.
Right. They're trying to scare us with it, you're going to have to not just degrade the receiving stream at all. That's not scary. What is the receiving stream? Tell me how far we are off of it.
Like.
Yes. Because I'm sure there's coagulant, there's different things we can do to basically make it purified water before we send it down there. So.
Well, indeed, at our meeting, Betsy, and there was a DEQ gal there, says, the fisheries down the coast are having problems, because the water they discharge back in the sewer system or the, out in the ocean has to be cleaner than the drinking water that's coming in.
How's the, yeah. I'm all protecting, I mean, I feel like everyone in the state is all for protecting fish, protecting forests, our environment, but not to this kind of bureaucratic ridiculous level. It's like, you're probably drinking worse stuff in an actual city in Oregon than we're putting into the river. So.
Like Dale said, we're probably doing the river.
Well, we know we are. They didn't like, they didn't like to hear that we were also cooling the river with the swimming hole.
Well, I, there's another way of looking at it. We're, we're probably the only unique sewage system in the state of Oregon, and they're picking on us.
Well, that's the thing. I said, well, where are the other communities that have this? We're the only one.
Yeah.
Well, to me too, a little bit of legal question here.
Right.
Is, they were the ones that suggested this to us.
Yeah.
They signed off on the design of this. Our lender is USDA, which is tied to the feds, so they signed off on it.
Right.
So, and again, I think, you know, the well injection, I understand the knee jerk here of not contaminating somebody's drinking water, but one, you cannot have a well in the city of Vernonia. Two, you cannot prove that this plume, anybody's going to be able to tap it to drink it.
Right.
It's all going to move to the river. So you would, you would hope there's some common sense somewhere, but.
Yeah.
You know, but again, I think that movie might be pretty correct.
So that's that in a nutshell. And then just a reminder that we're closed, the nineteenth, of course, for present stay observance, and then we'll have our meeting Tuesday, the twenty-first, then we'll have a meeting Wednesday, the twenty, or, sorry, Tuesday, the twentieth, then we'll have a meeting Wednesday, the twenty-first for the park design pick. And that's all I have. Yeah.
So where are we on the electrical in Spencer Park? And also, I mean, this is a Facebook post, but.
Oh.
But I think there is kind of, I can, I can understand the concern. That intersection at California forty-seven and then down California towards Blue Mountain, it's kind of a dark hole. And I was just wondering if there was a way to put in a light, if we're going to put a pole over there somewhere, and how hard would it be to add a light to it?
So I don't know that the main, that side will have a pole, because I think we're attaching to our structures for the height. But I did see that post that a woman was.
Saying it was dark. Typically, if it's not something that's already slated on the city's like plan, then it is set on the post.
You could pay for it yourself, but it's not currently one of the existing, or like a replacement of existing that's already in our woof.
Which, which begs the question is, what are we doing as a city as we're building out?
You mean in, on the.
Oh, like Louisiana, is there any street lighting up there?
There's not currently, but Louisiana's, in the plan of Louisiana, there is Westo lights along Louisiana, not on the side streets.
Because typically, side streets are paid for by the, like a.
In my, on my street, Harold, that's across the street, and one down from me, he purchased a light, so he has a light on Lakeview. And then I think one further down by Angela Brown's, they purchased a light a long time ago.
Really? That's interesting. I mean, it's a little inequitable with some of the other people that have streetlights.
Yeah.
I've never even thought about it to just now, and so.
Yeah, so we current, I mean, if, if someone was putting in like a full subdivision, and it didn't have any streetlights, it's part of the requirement for subdivision. But like Louisiana, those are platted existing lots, they're not a subdivision, like we know.
Yeah.
So, yeah. But in the plan that Robert did, the design plan for Louisiana, there are like, at least the spots for, before you pour a sidewalk here, get West to put in a light. Yeah. But I, I mean, that, if, if council wanted to do it, they could totally have us do it, right? As staff. My only concern there is, then what happens with somebody on Fourth Street wants light, more light in their neighborhood? Then we get into the habit of putting it in, like, oh, anywhere anyone wants it?
Yeah.
Which I don't know. How about?
I'm paying for the one that's around my house, benefits the school parking lot more than me, but.
Yeah.
I think, I felt like saying to the lady, meet me at the hardware store, I'll buy you a headlamp or something.
But it is kind of, you know, it's, to put a streetlight on California and have a private person pay for it would be kind of awkward, I would think.
Well, or they, Head Start could pay for it, right? I mean, they could network with the property owner, because I believe that person lives at the apartments.
I think so.
So she could go to her man, the management of, and the owner of that and see if they put safety lighting.
That gap between Head Start and out California.
Kind of.
And then, you know, the base of that hill though, I don't know about anybody else, if there's nobody coming, I hit my high beams in there, because it's kind of a dark hole right in there. It doesn't, isn't, almost deer like to cross right there.
Yeah.
And I usually run my high beams in there, not traffic, so. So I think, I, I understand the point that's being made there, and I'll look on the way home more.
Yeah.
But just thinking, if we were putting up a pole on that far end of the park, we could.
Yeah.
Kind of light off of it.
Not in the plan we have currently with Blue Mountain, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Josette? Susan or Ray?
So, that's it for me, thank you.
Okay.
Definitely from me either, thank you.
Thank you, Josette.
You're welcome.
Just a bad on that. I have some light fixtures. I have a little bit of a pool and a mountain that everybody has donated if needed for a project. I used to work for a high-end architectural company that had access to high-end equipment.
Okay.
If anybody in the marketing might need one for personal use for, for down the street, like you guys were saying, upon the front on their own property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nice.
We would have to make sure they meet the new requirements they're trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they, you might have, we're also having time for the entire United States.
I know we have this dark sky.
Dark sky in Washington.
Oh, cool. No, see?
Yeah. It's out there, it's a thing.
And I was in the industry for forty-eight years.
Oh, wow.
A resource.
Yeah.
Okay, items from the mayor and our councilors.
Go ahead, Dale. Um, I talked to Bill Hanson today, he's going to drop the trees off at my house Friday.
Okay.
For planting down in the McNair Forest.
Yeah.
And I didn't count them, I've been using the city's four-inch auger and going down and augering out the holes. So it'll go a little, because he can't plant from that ground with a shovel. And, and I think we're supposed to be getting some.
Some mix.
Some mix.
EB mix, yeah.
We're going to help, because it's so heavy clay in there, we're going to try to give them a little boost of a start. I did notice, I was pulling the dead trees out, quite a few of the dead trees I pulled out were planted too deep. It's about three inches up above the roots on them. I mean, even the little finger roots were down in there, and I think it was too deep. Well, we had a little bit of planter air on some of them. I was, because that one row, I was like, they, they took off and were growing really good, and then.
Were they in the trough? Like, were they in the runs that you?
Yeah, but, 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 you know, they augered the holes.
Oh.
And then they put the tree in and filled it on, and it kind of tamped to get the air, but they got the tree a little too deep, and then just finished the dirt, and, so yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of interesting. I mean, I'm no expert on it, but was curious why some of them, they were really looking good, and then all of a sudden, they just were done.
One guy has longer arms than the others or something?
Yeah, I don't know.
He just, he can reach way down there, and the rest of them are shorties.
I'll talk to Bill when he comes.
Yeah.
But then hopefully, we'll be getting a forestry class down there, and.
Yeah.
Sounds like they're excited about the opportunity of, the entire city's forest lands gives them kind of a project area to work in, going out and doing, you know, survey plots on what we have, and I'll be purely interested to see what the numbers or what we've got growing, and.
And then I am planning on picking up, not this week, but Monday, sending one of the guys down to get the Willamette Valley pines.
Oh, the pines, yeah. Yeah.
Because those should be available to us.
And you know what? I didn't notice, but Columbia County Woodlands.
On their list?
They have Willamette Valley police.
Or at least they have them on the list for their spring sale.
Okay. And that's March something, though, right?
I think so.
Yeah, so we can get these guys on the fifteenth, the Willamette Valleys from Brooks Tree Farm.
I mean, that's a really interesting subject, because there are some scientists that think that that's really the direction the forests are going to go with the warming. And it's, and if you look at the pines that they planted, I'm not sure which type these are, I still don't, I mean, they do look like, I think a ponderosa, three needle, and that's what these are. I don't know if they're the Willamette Valley ones that were native. They're growing gangbusters.
Oh, yeah, they love it there.
But the other thing that I'm seeing, we're getting a lot of natural seedlings of fur in the shade cast side of those ponderosa pines.
Interesting, where it stays a little more moisture.
Yeah, just, just enough shade now for they can, the seedlings could take off there. So that's an interesting aspect to that, for forestry in general.
It's going to be like planting your tomatoes next to your peppers or whatever you're supposed to do.
There's one I'm going to plant next to the.
It's interesting, I was looking at some stuff online, and they were talking about, you know, tree planting, where to plant, and they're always plant to the north side of the stump. Any little shade obstacle, that was where you wanted to plant.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Fall.
Yeah.
McNair Experimental Forest.
Maybe.
Yeah.
He would have loved that.
Thank you, Dale.
I don't have nothing, Rick.
You know, I could report on our city-county dinner that Donald and I attended two weeks ago, I believe, on, on the twenty-third, but basically, the guest speaker was from the biodiesel port, and he gave us a report on how that's coming along. Still in the permit process, of course. EPA water permits have been a struggle for, going on three years now or so, but they're, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're pretty optimistic about eventually.
Yes.
Getting those sometime this year. Lot of questions. Donald asked a great question to the speaker about biodiesel and what that does to our, our engines, and I, I think I learned some that night, if it's true or not, but.
Yeah, it's causing problems with the fuel systems.
Little bit better than I can, Donald, but.
The biodiesel is gumming up and wearing out your diesel fuel systems, so they're not lasting as long.
What the heck?
And I'm finding, it used to be just Shell that had bio-twenty. Now it's almost all of them, it's bio-twenty. You don't have a choice when you go to the gas, a fuel station to get diesel, it's bio-twenty. A lot of ball plants are still bio-five percent, but everybody else is almost twenty. And it used to be that you could get bio-twenty about twenty cents a gallon cheaper, now it's the same price. And the speaker said, well, no, this isn't going to be, cause you problems like that biodiesel, this is a different type. But the more I think about it, some of the stuff he's talking about using, I know there's toxic waste from it. Now where's that going?
Yikes.
Because he's talking about using the oil, deep fry oil from restaurants.
Yeah, how though, they filter that or something, right?
They process it and.
And I know they got to add chemicals to it, and there is a waste that is toxic after you do that.
Did he have an answer?
Well, I didn't ask that. As I'm thinking, you know, he's telling me that their diesel's not going to be like biodiesel.
Yeah, he said.
But then, when they told me some of the stuff they're using, I'm going, no.
It's the same.
Yeah. Yeah.
But
Interesting.
I don't know.
Isn't a lot of that supposed to be going for jet fuel?
Yeah.
United Airlines?
Yes.
Partnering with them?
Yeah.
Yeah, Boeing, Boeing.
Boeing.
Yeah, and it's, it's coming in mostly on the water and going out on the water very there will be some coming distributed here in Oregon by the rail, but
But I'd like to know Donald, Donald's question of
Well, yeah.
Waste products.
But he, his answer adamantly was, there's a difference between our end product and the biodiesel. Our end product does not
It's just like regular diesel.
It's, it does not hurt the
Interesting.
The
The engines.
Engines.
So I've always heard that biodiesel, when guys, if you were running a regular diesel and then you went to biodiesel, they said, boy, change your filters. Because they said it, it was, it's one, they said it had more lubricating properties to it. More slippery everything, but it also, it cut anything in your tanks and stuff and it tended to clog the filters. But it was because it was cutting
Removing.
Stuff out of the It was supposed to be cleaner, but I don't know what your experience is with it. I mean, is it eating up pumps and stuff like that?
Well
Skills?
You can't let diesel sit like you used to.
Because it'll eat it away?
No, it varnishes just like gas.
What varnishes?
Yes.
And the biodiesel?
The biodiesel does.
Oh, yeah, that's not good.
No, and you know, you never worried about a diesel sitting forever because it didn't really go bad, but now it does because of added the bio to it.
Just like ethanol gas.
Yes.
Yeah.
But anyway, I, I think they'll eventually get it up and running. They did have a, an accident down on the, on the wharf at the port. Oh, gosh, when was that, Donald? When the, a big barge hit, hit the dock. And there was a pipeline underneath it. And it, it didn't fracture it during the accident, but during the repair of it, they, it a little
Had its fill.
Was it oil?
Been on much.
Got into the river and they cleaned it up right away, but it was quite a big thing. It was a huge barge.
Huge.
Slammed into the, so they, I think they just about have it repaired now. So that didn't help the cause much there. But Betsy was there, Betsy Johnson gave a report on Measure 110. That's being legislated right now. So, yeah, it was a good meeting. Anything else I could
Well, I think most of it, they plan on going in and out through the river. But in case something happens that they can't get out the river, they want to do the, do it by train.
Oh.
But people are fighting the train access.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're worried all kinds of stuff's going to happen, but I just think you mess in the ocean than you would on a train.
Yeah.
So they're kind of working on that hurdle a little bit that so if something happens, they still have a way to get the product out to the customers. It sounds like Metro and the airport and a bunch of them are real excited to get this stuff. And they think they can supply enough for the west side of Oregon.
Well, they've probably been having to truck it from a lot farther. Or ship it a lot further, so that'd be awesome.
It, it'll, it'll be a great asset for our county. I mean, it's huge. It's 240 full-time jobs. Pay over 80,000 average a year and it's bringing in a lot of revenue. Like four to five million in revenue. So it's, it's huge for our county, so. Something else I was going to say about that being Oh, there was a moment of silence for the city, Columbia City Mayor Sue passed away in December. So.